Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. It's seven o'clock. We appreciate you coming out on this beautiful Pittsburgh evening, but we are appreciative of your interest and have a lot to share this evening. I'm Dr. Ken Laquette. I'm Superintendent of Schools here at South Fayette, and we are glad you're here for this important conversation. So over the past nine months, the administration, together with the Board, faculty, staff, and student and family stakeholders, have been hard at work developing a master plan for the South Fayette campus. We're here tonight to share that plan and open up some space for input as we prepare to implement this plan. The plan will bring big changes to our campus over the next five years, changes that we need to make to meet the rapid growth of our district, both short term and long term, and changes we need to make to ensure that the excellent education that many of you have come to expect from South Fayette remains. Those are two things we'll hear throughout this evening, that is growth and academic So as above, above is how we are structured this evening. In a moment, I'll share my summary of the process that we undertook to develop the master plan, the key learnings that came out of it, where we are in the process, and what we're heading next. Then you'll hear more about the capacity needs that are driving the plan, as well as the fiscal responsibility we've built into the plan from School Board Representative Dr. Jen Iredy. Then each of our school principals will talk about the impact that the master plan will have on educational programming and the experiences that your students will have across the district. Designer Kevin Hayes from Hayes Design Group will provide an overview of the master plan itself, covering each building on campus and the timing of the plan. And we will have some time at the end for questions, and we have that set up for us So over the past several months, the district administration and Board have worked with a team of designers, architects, builders, and community stakeholders to develop this And our starting point for this process was our mission, that is to cultivate academic, artistic, and athletic excellence of the whole child by fostering the skills to be confident, ethical, empathetic, and responsible global citizens. This is what we've committed to do in partnership with the community, and our campus environment is a huge factor in our ability to achieve this mission. At this moment in time, our mission is captured in the phrase "Small World, Big Future." We've adopted this as our motto, and we do honestly really mean it. The world is growing smaller, our community is more diverse than it's ever been, and the entire globe is in the reach of our students. Their futures are enormous and unknowable, and it's our job to make sure they have everything they need to be able to thrive. And it's from that lens that we've approached this project and this process in looking at the South Fayette campus and what needs that we have for the future. Addressing growth is also a key component of the district's strategic plan, also titled "Small World, Big Future." It is a focus because of the urgency of the rapid growth within the community and what it has cost for us. We've been one of the fastest-growing districts in the state, and that trend is continuing with more and more land being zoned and sold for residential building. The process began with a visioning session where the administration, the Board, community stakeholders identified key issues and goals. The design team then analyzed enrollment projections to forecast growth in student populations for the next 10 years to 2029. An intense educational programming effort was then completed, and this involved the principals of each school, as well as feedback from teachers, students, and families through focus groups, and this helped us forecast educational programming needs as we go into the future. The design team then completed an assessment of current buildings, systems, and grounds, looking at the conditions of all of our buildings' currents and the maintenance needed. Based on the information gathered in the visioning session, the enrollment projection forecast, educational programming process, and facilities assessment, the design team developed 12 options for a master plan. Through a series of feedback sessions with the district administration and Board, the design team did narrow the plan down to two options that were blended to create the consensus plan that you will see this evening. Preliminary cost estimates were reviewed by the district business manager and underwriting advisor to see that the project would be fiscally achievable over a phased-in timeline. So this is not going to happen overnight. It will happen over several years. On November 26, 2019, the Board voted to approve the master plan and proceed with the phased approach, with the plan beginning in 2020. So what brings us to tonight with the master plan is it brings us to the master plan that will guide us for the next five years. And this is what it boils down to. It boils down to a new elementary school closer at the heart of the campus. Our existing elementary school building is too small, it's outdated, it's by far the most costly building to maintain, and it will eventually be demolished. We'll also have the need to expand our intermediate school, and we'll be renovating middle school, our middle school through a three-story addition. So currently, we're really busting out of the seams in three of our four buildings. We'll be optimizing our high school without any alterations or new construction, and so it'll remain as it is. And most of the needs and with movements with great configurations, as you'll see shortly, helps with that shift. Now with the capacity and financing, we set out to build a campus master plan that meets the needs of our growing community and maintains fiscal responsibility, and the plan is built to do both those things. And at this point, I'm going to call up Dr. Jen Iredy, who will share more information.
As Board members, it's one of our core responsibilities to ensure that the district has what it needs to nurture the potential and brilliance of each and every student that we serve. This commitment is captured in the ambitious vision that we recently adopted for the district. South Fayette Township School District will be a model of excellence where students will gain the knowledge, skills, dispositions, and experiences to thrive in the technology-driven, ever-changing landscape of the global workforce. We're proud to call South Fayette home and proud to send our children to this school because we know that we're already living this vision. In order to sustain this vision over the long term, we need to start getting ready for the changes that are coming just over the horizon. The biggest variable for us to attend to is our incredible growth in enrollment that's going to continue. Enrollment at South Fayette has grown 65% since 2005, and we're already running out of space despite construction and expansion projects, of which I'm sure you all are aware over the last number of years. And while most other schools and districts in our region expect flat or declining enrollment, at South Fayette, we're really busting at the seams. So as we look ahead, enrollment is projected to increase by almost 35% by 2029, which is just 10 short years away. So that means about 1,200 more children to nurture, educate, and inspire within our facilities. To give you some perspective, that's as about as many students as you would expect in our current high school. So it's a whole school building worth of students that will be added in the coming decade. As our community grows, so too must our district. If we're going to carry our tradition, pride, and excellence into the future, we're just going to need more space. So we need to expand to meet our current needs, where we're already busting at the seams, but we also need to be planful for the growth that we know is coming over the next decade. Instead of just building an annex here or expanding a classroom or two there and finding out four or five years later that it wasn't enough, the plan sets us up with the campus that we'll need, not just today, but for the decade to come. It's an incredibly important moment for our district. We have the opportunity not just to ensure that today's students experience the tradition, pride, and excellence that we all cherish, but that the next generation of Lions will as well. So now I know what you're thinking, you know, what's this going to be cost and how's it going to be paid for? So first, we have made a commitment to fiscal responsibility. The budget estimates for the plan were developed based on current and historical revenues, which include the taxes that you pay, funding from the state, federal, and other sources, as well as the district's borrowing capacity. The phasing of the project means that the project, the cost of the project is spread out over time rather than acquired all at once. So we've done careful financial consideration of these construction costs, and we chose a scope and a phasing that is affordable. However, projections are never certainty, and we will have operational costs to consider as well. We'll be able to share much more detail about the financial aspects of the project in the Act 34 hearings that are required by state law in the future. You'll hear more about that later. We've also infused optimization strategies within much of this construction and modification that will allow us to save money on some types of expenditures over the long term. So in terms of costs, what we have right now are estimates, and they're spread out over the whole five-year project. The work we do on these buildings will now, now will save us money in the long term. So what you'll see, as Dr. Laquette mentioned, is a new elementary school that's estimated, and again, these are estimates, estimated to cost $43.9 million, an expanded intermediate school with an estimated cost of $6.7 million, a renovated and expanded middle school that's estimated to cost $26.2 million, and an optimized high school. The work we've done as a Board, with the administration, the school community, our design partners, has led to a plan that we can afford. Again, we'll be able to share more detail about the financial aspects at the Act 34 hearings when all the bids are in. Our previous two construction projects, the intermediate school and the high school additions, both came in under budget. So now I'd like to turn it over to Kevin Hayes from the Hayes Design Group to discuss the master plan and provide you with some specifics.
One thing I wanted to mention before I begin is I actually am standing here representing over 20 professionals who worked on our design team in the past seven months on the feasibility study, master planning study. That consisted of architects with our firm and also with our partnering firm, Weber Murphy Fox, but also civil engineers, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, plumbing engineers, and food service engineers. So I speak on behalf of all of them tonight. What we're going to go through is if you take out your handout, you'll, you actually have this in the handout that you picked up coming in the door. You can reference that or watch along as I speak tonight. And what I'm going to do is take you through the master plan that's been adopted by the district and explain some of the key components, more from an overview standpoint. After I speak, the principals will come up and talk about each of the individual buildings that are going to be impacted in a major way. So what I'd like to do is start by just orienting everybody. I'll turn my laser on and see if this works. There we go. So just to orient everybody, this is Old Oakdale Road. Everybody's filming that. Battle Ridge would be up here. And again, this is the middle school, and it would kind of go around in clockwise. This is the existing high school, existing intermediate school, existing elementary school. So I'm going to start with the existing elementary school. It sits right in the middle of everything. It's an older building with aging building systems, aging mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. It does not lend itself, if you kind of look, you can see the outline of the shape of the building, and there was an addition put on, but the building itself doesn't really lend itself to the additions that would need to be built onto the building in order to increase the enrollment capacity. And so because of both its age, its location, and the inability to add on to it well, our recommendation is that that will be eventually demolished. In its place, we are recommending that a new elementary center be built in the southeast corner of the site. And if you're having a little hard time reading where this is, this is where one of the practice fields is, existing right here. And this would be a new elementary school built nearby, and again, adjacent to or close proximity to both the high school and the intermediate school. The purpose of a new elementary school would be to consolidate grades K through three into it. And one of the advantages we have in building a new building, not only the obvious benefit of a new building going forward, but the layout of the building can be done in such a way that it will lend itself to future additions when capacity needs to be increased. Also, it can be laid out so that if the district at some future date decides that full-time kindergarten is an option they want to proceed with, that additional classrooms for kindergarten full-time can be added to this plan as well. In addition, this location is much further away from Old Oakdale Road, which means it's a safer location, both because of the fact that you're not going to be worried about traffic adjacent to Old Oakdale, but you also are not going to have the ability for strangers or other such things to perhaps look at the elementary school in terms of the campus. It's kind of hidden back in the southeast corner of the building. The next building we're going to look at is the intermediate school. So you can see these small appendages. What we're proposing in the intermediate school is it is a, one of your newer buildings. It's a very well-designed, well-functioning building. We're looking at putting additions on to increase its capacity for enrollment, and those additions would follow the current educational programming, which works well, and the additions would match it. There's also space designed into the plan so that if more future enrollment capacity is needed, they can be added on as well. The next building is the middle school, which takes a little bit of explaining. So this is the existing middle school. It really, as those of you who have children in it know, it's really two buildings in one. You have the original high school for South Fayette, which was converted into the middle school, and then a large addition was added in the recent past to increase its capacity. The existing building, the old original high school, is actually a well-built structure, but the existing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are reaching the end of their expected life. The addition that was put on, which is in the back of the building here, is actually well-built and well-functioning and in good shape. So the recommendations that we're making is that the building would go through a total renovation, again, primarily the older portion of the building, with all new building systems, including new finishes. And then we're also recommending that a new addition be put on. The combination of the alterations we would make in the existing or original building and the addition would allow the programming of the building to better work with a seventh, eighth, and ninth grade arrangement that the district would move to. Now, what's important is that this building will have to remain occupied while construction is being done. That's never ideal, but one of the things, and we've done many, many phased renovations, the areas that would be worked upon would be completely segregated from the areas that would be occupied by students. There'd be no opportunities for air or dust or any construction items or issues to come into the school area while construction is being done. What we're looking at is only doing portions of the building at a time in order to make it manageable from a functional as well as construction standpoint, and during that time, some students will be housed in the existing elementary. Once that construction is completed, then all the middle school students would be in the middle school, and the existing elementary school would be demolished. And the benefits of demolishing the existing elementary school is that it really opens up the entire campus, and what we're envisioning would be a green space that would really connect all of the buildings to one another. You can see in here, there would still be parking, but the existing elementary school would be replaced by two practice fields. So you'd have practice fields up there, and again, the open, the open sense of the, of the campus would be really appealing, and again, and allow very different perception of the campus than you do today because of the way the buildings are situated. Next building to talk about going up would be the high school. We're just saying it's an optimized high school because we really don't have a lot of work planned for that building. With the recent additions and alterations projects and the fact that the building is one of the newer buildings in the district, it really is set up right now to do well for 10, 15, or 20 years. What we're looking at here is expected maintenance and other such items that are going to need to be done in the next five or six years. They've just been built in to the project, and they would be done when needed. The other thing to talk about would be the new Pupil Services Center. Currently, the Pupil Services is in its own single detached building adjacent to the middle school. If any of you have been in it, you know it's not a great building. It's a very old building, and the systems in the building aren't very good, and we're recommending demolishing it. The other reason we're recommending demolishing is that it really can't function in its current size for what the district wants to do with pupil services. So what we're recommending is a new pupil services building, more central to the campus, so that again, it's very easily accessed by students from any of the buildings, adjacent to adequate parking. And again, the size of the building would be sufficient such that it would serve the needs of the Pupil Services Center, but also give the district an opportunity of creating something like a student center to service the needs of the students. And then lastly, there's a new maintenance and transportation building that would be constructed. The current building simply is too small and is also antiquated, so we're recommending demolishing that and building a new one in its place. Well, that's, that's the overall plan, and what I'd like to take you through right now is then how does all this happen? And this is going to be, again, an overview of how it can happen. As Dr. Laquette has already said, one of the key priorities was fiscal responsibility. So the goal that the Board charged our team, along with the administrators, come up with is what's the plan that will work to implement the desired master plan, but also do so in a way that is fiscally responsible. So what we had to look at was the budget parameters that the district has, and we came up with this plan, and I'll walk you through it. So to begin with, we'd be looking at the first three projects listed, the new elementary school, the middle school, and the intermediate, middle, intermediate school project moving forward into design in 2020. The new elementary school is going to take a year to design, and I'll come back and talk about that in a moment. So the first project out of the gates really is, is a small project for the middle school. Right now, the middle school is at capacity for student enrollment, and the projection is by next year, they're going to need more capacity for students. So our recommendation is that this coming summer, we would design it in the spring, bid it, and do the work in the summer, would be to create six new classrooms in order to increase capacity for the students necessary to essentially take us to the next phase of the middle school, which I'll come back to. But that's just a small initial phase to increase enrollment capacity at the middle school. The intermediate school, as Dr. Laquette mentioned in his remarks, it is close to capacity as well. That would be the, a project designed in 2020. The green, by the way, in this, in this graph chart matrix, the green represents design work by our team. The orange represents construction and, or occupy activities, and the yellow is simply construction administration by the design team during construction. So getting back to the intermediate school, we'd design that, bid that sometime in 2020, begin construction 2020, and then have that construction end at the end of 2021, with, again, the ability to occupy the new spaces going into the second semester in the 2021, 2022 school year. So now back to the elementary school. That's going to take a year to design. Because of it being a new building, there's much more design work involved just for the building itself, but there's also going to be, you know, municipal review processes, including stormwater management, roadway, construction, impact, review, et cetera. So we're anticipating that would be a year. That would be bid and, and construction begun in 2021, about a two-year construction period for that building. And again, that also would be completed at the end of 2022 with occupancy being available at that time. Then going down and back to the middle school, the, the phase construction of the middle school would be designed in 2021, and then that would actually have a three-year construction process because, again, we're going to be taking smaller portions of the building because it has to remain occupied, and we're, and, and it's just going to take more time to phase the construction. We'll be able to do as much construction as possible during the summers, but during the school year, just kind of take very select areas, work on them, and take that through and anticipate that would be about a three-year construction period until it's all finished. Then with that in place, we're looking at the high school. Again, some of the work that we mentioned in the three- to five-year timeframe, it's going to have to be done, so we're going to be looking at that in the, you know, 2021, 2022, and then doing the work in 2022, 2023. We're then able to look at the pupil services and the maintenance and the district administration office. I didn't really mention that before. The stadium and the district administration office, again, have very, a small amount of work associated with them. Again, it's more of an ongoing maintenance, probably in the three-to-four, five-year time period, as well as the, the maintenance building and bus garage building that would be tied into, to the 2023, 2024 construction period. Down at the bottom, you kind of see the cumulative amount committed, which again is where we get to, you know, from $43 million, which actually includes your, by committed, we mean financing of projects, including ongoing and existing bond issues that the district has fiscal requirements to pay. That's where we are in 2020. The increase in that in terms of committed goes up a certain amount. What's important to share about this is that this is committed so that if a contract is awarded for, say, the elementary school, you know, the, the contract would be awarded here. That's why the commitment goes up, but the payment of that is over the entire course of the construction. You know, you'll only be paying for what you'll be building. And so what it comes down to is that from a budget parameter standpoint, the district administration, the Board, as well as your bond underwriting advisors have kind of said that for this year, your maximum borrowing capacity will be about $45 million, and it will go up $10 million each of the years after that. And so even though, again, this is under 45, this is under 55, even though this is showing committed $77 million, your actual expenditures will be under $65 million for 2022. And likewise, you'll have committed projects at this point of that amount, but the actual expenditures will be under $75 million, and, and then in 2024, your actual expenditures as a district will be under $85 million. So that's just a quick overview of a timeframe. And so with that, with that, I'm going to hand it over to the principals who can come in. Lori's going to join us first, and she, and will take you through each of the buildings.
Good evening. So currently at the elementary building, it is a K to 2 building with 800 students. We have six morning kindergartens, six afternoon kindergartens, 12 first grades, and 12 second grades, and we are out of space where we are right now. Many of our outside services from the IU that serve our children, such as physical therapists, occupational therapists, the vision and hearing, are using whatever space that we can possibly find on the day that they come. We no longer have the EDS K-plus program that is that daycare for the other half of kindergarten. We do not have space for them, and they've had to seek space off-campus. We do not include kindergarten students in any of our specials anymore, which are gym, library, music, arts, and arts-alive. We do not have additional special time slots should we have to add additional classrooms. Our special area teachers are maxed with the number of classrooms that they can see during the day. With the increased student enrollment that will be coming without the space and without the new building, that simply would mean extremely in, large increase in class sizes. As they also mentioned about the building being old and having issues, it is not ADA compliant. The classroom doors are very narrow, which are not wheelchair accessible. The lack of electrical outlets in our classrooms makes using technology very difficult. If you were to go into one of our classrooms to If you were to go into one of our classrooms today, you would see extension cords in many places in the classroom just to make sure that the technology works and not to mention the leaks that we have when it rains. So what does that mean for a new K to 3 building? When you look at children in early elementary, K to 3 are the foundational years of learning, and we always say that kindergarten through third grade are the years where students are learning to read. Fourth grade and beyond, we say they are reading to learn. So putting third graders in that configuration only makes sense with the developmental needs of those students. The new building would enable us to build the classrooms that are needed, not only to include special area kindergarten classrooms, but to make those spaces that are necessary to meet the individual needs of our special needs students who do have outside services coming to meet with them. It also gives us the opportunity to have the special education grade configurations and classrooms that are needed to meet the needs of special education students and according to their requirements. The modernized classrooms would also enable us to use technology the way technology should be used. Our classrooms would be ADA compliant, and being with the K to 3 teachers, it would also allow for that collaboration to take place and to ensure that all of our students are receiving research-based instruction, which is so crucial for students in their learning. And we would also be able to continue with our reading rooms, which provides intensive reading instruction for our reading, for our most struggling learners with reading. So with this new building, you can see it's a 123,000 square foot facility. It does enable us to meet the needs of the students and to have the space that we need to continue with the programming that we want to have. Right now, we are at the limit. We do not have any extra space, and there are things that we are not doing right now because of that. I'm now going to turn it over to Tom Kaminski, the principal of the intermediate school.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. Just to go over what the impact is for the intermediate school. At present, we are just under 800 students, and much like the elementary school, we are at capacity. We are, all of our classrooms in the building are currently being utilized, and we are feeling, we are feeling the pinch of our growth as well. So the proposal for our building would, has three main points. It would add 10 regular classrooms, a large group instruction space, and three specialty classrooms in the building. So as Mrs. Gray stated, we have 12 homeroom sections in each grade level at the elementary school. Currently, we have 10 third grades, 11 fourth grades, and 11 fifth grades. So starting next year, we would need two additional third-grade classrooms in order to maintain the class size numbers that we've become accustomed to and that will ensure our students' continued academic achievement. Research shows that as class size increases, that oftentimes, student achievement will go down. So we want to be out in front of that and to make sure our continued, make sure to ensure our continued academic excellence. So those 10 additional classrooms are key to that academic excellence. In addition, the three special areas will offer additional opportunities in the arts and in technology for our students in grades four through six as the new building will be configured. And finally, the large group instruction space opens up opportunities for presentations and real-world experiences for our students, which will continue to prepare them for their As the construction is going on, we'll be maintaining that academic excellence and to do so, the construction will be limited, as Mr. Hayes mentioned, to the two corners of the building, which will minimally impact our students. We will continue our current practices of move-up day. Instead of it being second grade move-up day, it would be a third grade move-up day, and we'll also include opportunities for our new sixth graders in the building to visit the middle school and prepare for that transition as well. It gives us an additional year with students at the elementary level to prepare them for the middle school transition, and it also allows our upper elementary teachers to collaborate more effectively in a four, five, and six setting. Additionally, several years ago, the state changed the certification process. As our two buildings are currently constituted, most of the teachers in the elementary and intermediate schools have K to six certification. However, our newest teachers, because of the changes in certification of the state, are either coming out with a pre-kindergarten to fourth grade certification with the option to add on fifth and sixth grade certification, or it is a middle school cert that runs from fourth grade to eighth grade. And so a four, five, and six building will enable us to continue to recruit the very best candidates for our teaching ranks and to continue, and we've seen that those teachers and research shows us they have the greatest impact on our students as well. And hopefully with our construction, the majority of the major projects and major disruptions would be confined to the summer months, so that it would be minimally disruptive to our students during the school year as construction is going on. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the middle school and Ms. Dyckley.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Kaminski. As you have heard, the middle school is at capacity. It currently houses grades six, seven, and eight, and we have just under 900 students. We have had to convert classrooms or non-instructional spaces into classrooms to withhold the recent enrollment increases. Sorry. We have also lost large group instruction spaces, which are spaces for the teaming model, which is critical to the middle school, and opportunities for students to collaborate and for interdisciplinary lessons, projects, and experiences to happen. We have lost those over time in order to convert those into other classrooms or learning spaces that were paramount to our program. Additionally, our current cafeteria is at capacity and cannot withstand enrollment increases much beyond where we already are without expanding the cafeteria. So being at capacity, the proposed renovations and expansion show that we would be shifting our grades from six, seven, eight to seven, eight, nine. And I will tell you, the team's commitment is not to revert back to a junior high model. We are very much committed to a middle school model, and that is bringing in a freshman academy. What that means is we would bring ninth grade into our building and back into the model of having a team-based approach. Research states that freshmen, the indication of their success will determine their employability, whether that's straight to the job market, whether that's through trade, whether that's university or college. And so instead of transitioning and acclimating to the high school and the high school structure, we want to bring them back to the middle school program so they have a team of adults to surround them and a dedicated advocate through our advisory model, which will then set them up for some career counseling and career recommendations and support as they attend our program in the seven, eight, nine model. Additionally, our hope is to expand the elective offerings for our seventh and eighth graders so that they can have more personalized learning opportunities and a better preparation for careers, as well as supporting the mission and vision that were shared by Dr. Laquet and Dr. Iredy. Additionally, within our building with the expansion and renovations that are proposed, our better wayfinding and opening up the traffic flow, which is congested currently with the traffic of 900 middle school students moving throughout, and so we're looking for that traffic flow to improve with the proposed plan that exists. And we're also looking in the plan to certainly get additional classrooms so that we can maintain appropriate class sizes or decrease them based on what we currently have, as well as including some of those large group spaces that will duly serve as steam rooms or science labs, as well as large group instruction spaces, so that we can go back to our core model of real-world learning experiences, collaborations among our teams, our content areas, and those interdisciplinary lessons. So going back to, again, the idea that that ninth grade will be in our building, it will not compromise anything about their extracurriculars or their sports activities, nor will it compromise anything about their graduation preparation in terms of credits or requirements through the high school. Those will all be met. The enhancement will be that they will have a group of adults ready to handle them developmentally and to support them as they are advancing into high school and their future career, university, or employment plans. So that is what the expansion and renovation looked for the middle school and the benefits that it will serve our students, and most importantly, giving them the innovative and cutting-edge program that they deserve to be maintained here and that they've experienced thus far. So thank you. And at this time, I will pass it over to Dr. Hartzell, high school principal.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, the high school currently houses students in grades nine through 12. Well, there will not be any new construction here at the high school. Optimizing the high school does include a shift to house students in grades 10, 11, and 12, and a real intentional focus on the high school transition. These changes will lend to a reduction in class sizes, lower student-to-teacher ratios, and it will also avoid the need for teachers to share classrooms. Currently this year, we are just about two and a half years from our most recent renovation, and we do have several teachers that are sharing classrooms. This in turn will transfer to a focus on project-based learning, college and career readiness, and personalized learning opportunities. Project-based learning is essentially authentic experiences that are built into many of our classes that include school-to-business partnerships. These partnerships really do offer our students the ability to interact with professionals and work on soft skills, and also problem solve using an element of human-centered design. An example includes our partnerships with Alclad and Covestro, just to name two. Our college and career readiness focus will be expanded in accordance with 339. Specifically, our graduation project is being updated and revised to include an exit interview, as well as a series of tasks and experiences based on interests and college and career opportunities. Examples currently include our power lunches and an exposure to exit interview questions and soft skills, which did occur today as we start to transition our current graduation project with our seniors. They did their graduation project presentations today. And finally, in regard to personalized learning, please know that we are continuing to try to expand our advanced placement in college and high school course opportunities to students. Our program of studies will be revised to include career pathways or career clusters, and many electives have been added to include a more personalized approach. And in the last year alone, some of those classes include problem solving by design, the computer science pathway, storytelling by design, and podcasting. Essentially, here at the high school, we're trying to increase personalization to optimize the student experience and offer our students diverse opportunities to explore their interests and their passions. Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jeff Avanko, our assistant to the superintendent for secondary education.
Thank you, Dr. Hartzell. So right now, we're going to move into questions, comments, and answers for this evening's event. And so basically, we have about 35, 40 minutes or so to bring forth questions and comments from the community. And on the slide here, you'll see a variety of folks who spoke, who will address some of those questions that you may bring forward. You heard a little bit about perspectives from superintendent, from the school board, from our architectural and design firm. You heard perspectives from our building-level administration related to programming. And now you may have some things that are kind of boiling up in your head that you want to kind of surface in the air. So the ground rules for how this will work is we're going to ask if you have a question or a comment to the community to come forth. We have two microphones here that are live now. We'll ask you to approach one of those microphones, and we'll go one at a time, back and forth. We'll ping your comment or question into the air, and we'll have, one of the members that are on the slide will address that. And I'll be walking around and passing the microphone as we're unable to anticipate exactly what the question is. It will be fielded by a variety of different perspectives that you heard, whether it be from the superintendent, the school board, our building-level administration, or our business and finance, or our architectural firm. Any clarifying questions with that? So now would be the moment where if you have a question or a comment, we'd ask you to approach the microphone, and we'll go from here. Maybe state your name.
Yeah, Craig Ibello. Quick question regarding the actual schools themselves. The elementary school, it was noted, there's the possibility for addition of flex space assuming we go to full-day kindergarten. If that's decided sooner rather than later, we could use economies of scale to grind down the pricing overall and get it cheaper right now than trying to build an addition later. Has that been considered? Essentially, using that as flex space temporarily, et cetera? It's going to be a lot more money five years from now to build that addition.
So if I hear your question correctly, it's related to the extended kindergarten, and have we considered the financial terms of doing it now or putting it off
Exactly.
A little bit down the road. Our team here. We'll have our team, if you're ready. If anyone wants to answer that, we'll have you raise your hand.
It was considered, and you are correct. If you build it now, it'll be less expensive than if you build it in five years. So the question is, and I think the board is looking at it, it would be a kind of community decision is, do you want to go full-time kindergarten or not? There's a lot of expenses related on the other side, non-building side, administrative, teachers, teacher salaries, benefits, increased maintenance, et cetera. So that's also a part of the issue. But yes, it was thought about, and I can't answer for the board, though. I can only speak to your point about the cost.
And then in regards to the middle school, the renovation is going to be very disruptive for the kids there. What was the delta between building a new school somewhere else on campus versus renovating the school in terms of financing?
And so what we're looking at in terms of the renovation on campus and the disruption for students, would it have been a stronger case to build a new building rather than disrupting?
I can again speak to the cost implications. There's really two issues involved there. One is, it was considered, but there's no room on the current campus to build that building and still maintain, keeping all the students on your current campus. So that was one issue involved. The other is, and it may be worth just expanding upon, how was the elementary school looked at and decided that it was recommendable to tear it down? And how was the middle school looked at and recommended that it would be kept? And the short answer is age of building, age of system, condition of building and condition of system. The elementary is really your worst building on campus. The middle school, on the other hand, had going for it the fact that the original high school was built like a fortress, so the bones of the building are quite good. The building systems need to be upgraded in terms of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing within the shell, but the shell itself was pretty good. And there was a substantial addition made to the middle school, you know, more recently. And that portion of the building is in good, very good condition. And so from a value standpoint, it was fairly easy to recommend that the elementary school be demolished and not the middle school. Now, jumping to your other question, which is, if you were to build a new middle school, what would that delta be? It'd be, I mean, and I'm, I have to go back to my notes, but essentially, it'd be about $20 million more.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mike Caproni. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the great presentation. What about the property across the street? So what's going to happen with that now that we bought it and now it's going to sit empty?
So we're talking about the property across the street. What's the future plan for that and how does it fit into this overall study and presentation?
Great question. I'll quote Board Member Lynn Fornella here, which was that the purchase of that land was in thinking not for the immediate now, but for the future. Similarly, 20 years ago, Lynn, when the board bought the adjacent property here, not for current building at the time, but for future expansion.
It's a spray property.
Yeah. Right. So the property where we currently are was bought well before it was ever developed. And so the board, in thinking about the district's growth as well, the property across the street was purchased not so much for thinking about current expansion, because we'd like to keep one single campus here for as long as is feasible. But the idea is that it's most likely that the district is going to continue to grow for the foreseeable future, and so that was sort of an investment for down the line so that we could still maintain this vision for all of our buildings being here in this area. this vision for all of our buildings being here in this area.
Okay. If no one else has asked, I have a few more, if that's okay?
Yeah.
The entrance to the property? So, I didn't see anything in that in the plan, like a better, like, single entrance to the property? I know a lot of people that drive into Old Oakdale when we have visitors, they don't know where to go when they're going to certain things. So, is there wayfinding on the campus, better movement of traffic throughout the entire campus? Is that part of the plan also?
Traffic flow, wayfinding, signage as we enter the campus. Is that getting at your question?
Yeah.
I can answer it. Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. So, maybe like a better intersection too at the entrance?
I think all of those points are well taken. The, when the elementary school is eliminated, it will help a lot, because not only will you be able to see every building from Old Oakdale, but probably with two entrances. And we're actually, we did show, if you look at your plan, that it was passed out, a new entrance, yeah, to help with the circulation. All of that, though, will be studied in more detail, but there is a general recognition that traffic flow, wayfinding, signage needs to be improved.
Will there be improvements to Old Oakdale Road? So, potential turning lanes, so that we can have those throughout the township?
Yeah, that, that's beyond what we did in the study, but generally speaking, we anticipate that South Fayette may have some ideas about that. And again, when we go to them with a new building, there's probably going to be a traffic study of some sort that has to be commissioned, and then the results of that talked about.
Well, we have to pay for some of that, though, as a school district.
Right. Again, I can't speak for the municipality, but generally municipalities, when you create the problem, you have to fix it. Meaning, yeah, the improvements would be on the school districts.
One kind of other question. What would prevent this from happening? So, it's a great plan. It's great things. What's going to keep it from happening?
What's going to keep the plan from happening?
Well, this is very much driven by our enrollment projections, which have historically, with our demographer, Dr. Stuman, that we've used for many years from Carnegie Mellon University, his projections have been very accurate. He produces a range of scenarios for us, and we typically meet his most aggressive scenarios, historically. That's what we've done since I've been on the board. So, there's, you know, one variable would be the projections, the enrollment projections kind of disappear, right? We don't start realizing the students that we're projected to have. That seems very unlikely, given historically how accurate those demographic projections have been. The project is being phased in in such a way so that as we move forward with the project design and planning, should our immediate data over the next couple of years suggest that the enrollment projections are not being realized, we will have time to be responsive to that. So, what comes to my mind first and foremost is the driver is enrollment.
Yeah, if it goes one way.
We have to, we have to house and educate the students that come here. So, we will need to build for the students. So, I don't know if anybody else has any ideas of what would stop the project.
Hopefully, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matthew Pitts. With regards to forecasting, has the township been involved in those discussions as far as zoning and planning? Do they see the same thing as far as building trends, and are these people really coming?
Yes. So, we're talking about the inclusion of the township in the planning process now in alignment with the trends?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Fornella?
The demographer got his information from the township, and the demographer gets his information based upon the housing plans that are currently on the books, the projections from historical statistics that show births, deaths, et cetera. So, yes, although the township wasn't consulted intimately in terms of meetings with the boards, the township did provide information that allowed Shelby Stuman, the demographer, to make his projections on student enrollment.
Thank you. We'll go here first?
Hi, Heather Van Sgoy. This is a completely selfish question, because my son is right there on the cusp. But, for the middle school, when will the ninth grade be moved into the middle school?
So, this is a phasing question related to programming?
It seems like, it says 2024 is when it would be over, but it seems the intermediate school is 2021, elementary is 2022. So, I'm wondering if the ninth grade will move in 2022 or 2024? Or when?
Yes.
Dr. Lockett and I are going to have to one-two this, because from a capacity standpoint, it'll be ready in 2024 for all three grades to be housed there. That said, until we demolish the elementary school, you'll have additional capacity to move the ninth graders down. So, with that, I'm going to give Dr. Lockett in terms of any thought given to, you know, what works best educationally.
And the honest answer is that we don't have it all figured out as far as, you know, we'll see when we, because we still have to have the initial designs, things have to go out to bed. We'll decide what's the best time for that, and what will be the least disruptive for the educational programming. We could potentially move the middle school students into that elementary building, which is, sounds simple. It's not as simple as just shifting them over. So, there are, I think, a lot of items to be able to figure out through the design process and to see a little bit closer to what the construction timeline's going to be. But, we want to make it as least disruptive as possible, and that's going to be, what's going to guide our decisions.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Eric Rexrode. First one is, you mentioned safety of the elementary school as being a driver to get it farther away from the street. However, you're putting sports fields in that spot next to the street, which seem a bigger potential burden for safety. So, I was just wondering how you're addressing that in the plan?
Yeah. So, you're talking specifically about the variable of safety related to the elementary school, moving the elementary school back to make it more safe, and having fields where the elementary school will be demolished, and how we're going to address safety moving forward?
Correct, especially in the sports field.
Yeah. Thank you.
The idea is to be able to utilize the campus and try to keep everyone on this campus, and we understand that someone will be using that space. Currently, our elementary playground is facing the road, and our students are out there on a daily basis. And most of the sports activities in those fields would be utilized more after-school activities. Will there be less traffic and less chance of things to happen? And so, really, right now, we believe it's better to move them further in campus, or further into the campus where they are not as exposed to the road.
Okay. So, more internal traffic in the school than the main street in the school concern? Okay. Second question, just out of curiosity, sports facilities over in the elementary school, what would those look like in your plan, or has the plan gone that far?
It has not gone that far yet.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll go here first?
What happens if there's not enough money to pay for it all?
So, a finance question. What happens if there's not enough money to pay for it all? Mr. Tony?
Well, at this point, we've done a, what we've done, a legal, what's called a legal borrowing base capacity. That's where we take the last three years of our revenue times a certain percentage to make sure, and then we project that out over the next so many years. In this case, the next, you know, five to 10 years. So, we're very comfortable in knowing that we have, at our current millage rates, that we have enough money at those rates to fund the building, what's projected at this rate for the revenue that we need to offset, you know, the cost of these, of this building project. The second piece will be, at the Act 34 hearings, the additional expenses as far as staffing, you know, operating expenses, things like that. So, that's one of the reasons why we're phasing it out over the next five years, you know, to be fiscally responsible, and hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, phase that in, you know, at very minimal impact to everybody, but, you know, maintain that as over the next, last three years. This is the fourth year in a row we haven't had to have a millage increase, and our goal is to have a very minimal impact to the taxpayers. But, we'll have an Act 34 hearing for each phase of this building project, and then we'll have more information at that time. Okay? All right, good question.
Thank you.
So, just so I understand, this is going to be feasible on a revenue-neutral basis?
So, what do you mean by revenue? As far as?
Current school taxes are able to cover this funding?
As far as the building project, the projection, as far as our borrowing capacity?
Yes.
What we did was our current millage and our normal or last, based on our history, 2% revenue growth? Yes, that'll cover the $85 million, our legal borrowing base.
So, the assumption, then, is the newer communities, the new NVR community off Battle Ridge, the new Stone Gate, by Miranda, this is a few years out, is going to cover the additional administrative expenses?
Well, we don't know about all the operating expenses, because as far as, once we get into all the, you know, as far as furnishing each building, all the additional staffing, that'll be a more detailed funding analysis as far as, once we get in each Act 34, once we have all the bids back. So, but as far as the building project, yes.
Okay. So, the concern in a lot of the community members I talk with is when we have a reassessment here a few years out, obviously, most homes in the community are going to be reassessed at a higher rate. You're saying, then, we will be able to adjust our millage rates down to relatively remain as similar, the tax basis that we're at today?
Yeah, we can never, when there's a
Yeah, I know you can't forecast and make those guarantees, but that is the assumptions in the plan.
Yeah, and when there's a reassessment, the district can never profit from a reassessment.
No, I know.
We always have to modify our rates down.
Okay.
All right.
Hi, Shannon Osman. With the middle school renovation, I was curious if there was any thought put into upgrading the pool or possibly expanding it, since it's getting quite old and outdated, especially since a lot of the other schools have been expanding, upgrading, and putting in new pools. Ours is fairly, fairly old for the area.
So, this is specific to the aquatics facility in the middle school and consideration of upgrade with the feasibility plan?
Yes, sir.
The current project as presented was that the pool would be renovated with new equipment and upgrade what it is, but not expanding at this point. And what was decided was, when we get to that point, we will look at that again, and the board is interested in possibly expanding. But, from a cost standpoint today, the, in order to meet the budget parameters that were set, the expansion was not included, but the upgrade was.
Yeah, I just want to build on that a little bit. The master plan that you're seeing today is a result of, as you heard, many months of work by a lot of folks. And when we reached the phase of looking at sort of the feasibility of paying for the projects, we ended up needing to scope the project downward, right? We had a lot of items, high priority, medium priority, lower priority. And so, what you're seeing is a narrowed scope where we've taken the highest priority construction items. And so, some of these things, like expanded aquatics, were a, you know, medium priority, and so, they weren't able to be included in this more fiscally responsible scope.
Hi, Lori Poe. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, if we're going to the freshman academy, are you going to change school times for middle school to correlate with the high school? Because sports, marching band, you're going to have to deal with that. If you had all freshman sports, that would be okay, but there are sports that you can't offer as freshman sports. So, that is a concern there. And, I mean, I have kids spanning throughout the grades here, and the current situation for the kids who are coming up in the high school, this auditorium does not hold what we need when we have events. I was here for the middle school choral concert, and the amount of students up on the stage and the amount of parents that came and then left, we are not addressing the current needs of the students that are here. We're looking at the projections for the future. So, that is a concern. What are we going to do about the auditorium? Graduation cannot fit in the gym, continue to be in the gym if the class sizes continue to get bigger. Those two are concerns.
So, we'll tackle that a little bit. I think what you're talking about and what you framed were capacity issues, and one of those, the first question was related to the start time and necessity of the start time matching the high school and the middle school, as well as how that would link with transportation. So, maybe we'll take that one first, and then we'll talk about capacity second. So, school start times, high school, middle school?
Yeah, that's one of the first things that came to our minds that we would have to look at doing, is having a start time that is going to be the same for the middle school and the high school. With that, there is a lot of considerations, and mainly transportation being one of them. And so, we have time to be able to work out what that would mean and the schedule, and did some preliminary looks at what it might do for us. But, for us to be able to have both faculty as resources, as well as athletic and clubs and access for all students, that is something that we would have to look at.
Okay. And if I get this correct, the second part of your question, ma'am, is related to capacity that we're busting at the seams in all of our large space, all of our large spaces across all buildings, and how that was addressed in the feasibility study.
But, there really was nothing addressing it now over the next four years. What are you going to do in the high school to address the growth? I mean, each class is getting bigger, so each graduating class is bigger. So, how do you put them all in here? Parents, you know, families want to bring grandparents. I heard at the middle school, we can't bring grandparents anymore because there isn't enough room for them to watch their kids perform. High school, for graduation, I have six in my family, and they all can't come see my daughter graduate. You don't know that till your kid gets to high school, because when they're in elementary school, nobody talks about when they get to high school, only four people can go to graduation. So, what are we doing to address the kids now? I understand the future, but I want to know how my kids are going to benefit, who are in high school now, who are coming to high school. How is the system going to help them?
Yeah. So, and I think a real short answer of what we're doing now is this, in this whole feasibility study, we're currently, and Dr. Hertzler, you can kind of build on this, investigating our new venues for graduation, and we'll be putting forth a plan for the school board, as well as other large-capacity spaces, as this is our current problem. This is why we're here. There are things we're trying to plan for, for the future, as well as some things that are in the now, because we are feeling the expansion at all levels.
When we did the high school expansion project a few years ago, the size of the auditorium here was one of the biggest challenges and concerns. And at that time, other board members helped me with my numbers. But, at the time, the assessment that was done by our architectural firm was that due to the way this space is designed, the maximum addition that we could add was, I think, three? Was it 200? Two, somewhere around 200 to 300 seats at a price tag of over $1 million, if my numbers are right. So, that, at the time, that expand, I'm sorry, Lynn? Do you have a better memory than I do?
When this high school was built, this auditorium, as you can see, was built to hold about 830 people. And at the time, it was very large. In fact, this was an innovative auditorium theater. There weren't any theaters, there weren't any theaters at the time that looked like this. But, as you can see, you've got solid block walls all around. So, when we looked at the possibility of expanding this, the last expansion of the high school, it was determined that the most feasible way to do it would be to hang some sort of a balcony over top of the back, because you can't really move these walls out anymore, or you can't move the walls back. Adding a balcony would only add about 200 seats, and the cost was well more than $1 million. It wasn't even a firm estimate. It wasn't even a firm estimate, it was several million dollars. So that did not seem to be a feasible alternative, just to come in and disrupt, uh, the top of this audit, this theater, the lighting, the acoustics, to hang a balcony for just 200 seats, at a cost that was really, uh, not justified.
Thank you. We'll go here first, and then back to you, sir?
Uh, hi. Uh, I had a question about the property that we've already purchased. Uh, first question is, I don't know exactly where it is. Uh, is it opposite, uh, the school?
The property, are you speaking of the-
Yeah, that the school has already purchased?
Correct, it's a property directly across from the middle school.
Okay, oh, from the middle school, okay. Um, have there been any discussions about, uh, you know, taking the parking out on that side, and then somehow connecting it to the school, uh, out here? Because that way, we can probably free up a lot of space here for a lot of things that we are, you know, uh, struggling with.
Yeah, so I, I think your question is getting at how we thought about parking in the campus, uh, expansion, and had we considered parking across the street?
Since we have already, you know, purchased that land, yeah.
Correct, okay.
I think the short answer is, it's extremely expensive to pull anything across the street and connect it to the campus, because your most viable and safe solution would be a, essentially, a, a pathway that would go under the road. And, and we did look at that in, in an option, um, and it's very, very expensive. So, um, we are increasing the parking capacity, uh, on the site, um, both with regards to the, uh, new elementary center, we'll have more parking, and then the, when the, uh, new elementary center is demolished, um, there'll be some additional parking put onto the site at that time.
Yes, sir?
Uh, you spoke to the level of enrollment. Uh, what, what level of enrollment are the buildings projected to be built for? Is that their completion at 2024, or can you just speak to that, what level of enrollment the buildings are going to be constructed for?
Yeah, so capacity at the end of construction?
Hi there. Currently, the high school housing grades nine through 12 is roughly at 1,024 students to date. Um, I estimate in the next year or two with growth, that we're going to be roughly at 1,100, give or take, uh, a few students. The capacity at the high school is for 1,200 students total.
Uh, it, it's a, it's a very good question, and it, and it gives an opportunity to answer just how do you plan for this projected growth? I think, first answer is, nobody knows what the enrollment's going to be in 10 years. Um, so what we did is, we took a very conservative approach. Actually, the numbers that are, that were used in the planning of the current project was more conservative than Shelby Stuman, um, put into his, hi- his demographic study, um, because, uh, one of the, and Shelby Stuman's the best demographer I've ever been around. Um, but one of the things he specifically said in his report was, he excluded the impact of the, um, expansion of the Mon Valley Expressway, because it just wasn't able to be predicted what that would do. Um, so, we took into account that we needed to be more conservative. So, that was one. The, the other, though, is, in order to be as fiscally responsible as you can be, right? Let's spend every dollar wisely. You don't necessarily want to build for enrollment 10 years from now, um, because you're going to have way too much space in your buildings today, um, and you may never use that space. Oh, don't get me wrong, let, let me rephrase that. You will use it. It, you know, and anybody who's dealt with schools, it's like entropy. You know, it, it, you, you will expand to fill the space, but it won't be efficiently used. So, what we've done in the, in the master plan was, we took the five-to-six-year projection, um, that we had come up with, which was very conservative, and we designed all of the building for the next five to six years around that. But we also planned for each of the building's additional expansion if the enrollment comes to be as, uh, conservative as, as we've predicted, um, or, or modeled on, right? So we're, we're building about half of what we think you're going to need if enrollment continues along the way it's been evolving. And then, five or six years, you're going to need another plan, um, for more additions, um, if your enrollment continues to look like it's going gangbusters. So it's, it's, again, it's a matter of trying to plan as responsibly as possible, and, and we think that is. Um, because we think it's very likely that the capacity that you may need five or six years, again, if it's not as fast, you're going to need it in eight to 10 years, but you're going to need it. Um, beyond that, you know, we just didn't want to overbuild and, and spend the money that you may or may not have to spend.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Sorry, one last follow-up, and I apologize if I missed this in the presentation. I'm assuming we're going to maintain an optimized student-to-teacher ratio, uh, for the new buildings, um, and the second part of that, how are we going to maintain that during the construction phase? Because I know you're going to be shuffling people around.
Yeah. Well, I think that the short answer is, yes, this plan includes maintaining that student-to-teacher ratio, and the, the phasing of the, uh, the way that we're moving grades maintains that the same, because we're moving entire grade, grade levels, um, across a year.
So minimal disruption, we won't see classes packed with, you know, 25, 30. I know it varies by grade level, et cetera, but we're not going to see overcrowding of classes.
That is our ultimate goal, is minimal dis- disruption.
Okay, sure.
Just another question on the middle school renovation. Um, I heard the bones are good. I heard the services, the water, the electricity needs to be upgraded. Any other major structural changes for class size, layout, hallways, any of that, or is it mainly just kind of the electrical, water infrastructure?
Diving into the weeds a little bit here, but the, the answer to your question is, no, there will be alterations at the middle school to improve the circulation. Um, again, anybody familiar with the middle school in the older portion of the building, the, uh, high, the old high school portion? Um, the L, the, uh, you know, the corner of the L, uh, right where you have the, uh, ramp going into the auditorium, uh, on the first level, is just a bottleneck. So the plan does call for opening up that corner in order to ease traffic flow back and forth. Um, also, um, the classrooms, because of the sizes of classrooms when that building was built, um, there are many of them that just, it's like, it's not, it's not a goalie lock situation at all. It's, it, they're either a little too small, or a little too big, um, and they're not efficient. So we do have plans, I mean, that's one of the things we're going to be doing, uh, in next summer, is be taking, um, uh, quite a few of the smaller, uh, they're almost like a too large a conference room and too small of a classroom, and we're going to essentially take three to make two, uh, so that you have a nice classroom size for the additional capacity that we need there. So, is, is that answering your question? Yeah? That's what we're planning.
Thank you. Yeah. The new wing is being expanded, as well as the cafeteria.
Hi. Um, quick question regarding the intermediate school. So if everything goes as planned, what's the projected school year for the new sixth grade to start its first year in the intermediate school?
Do you have it on that phase? Anna was on the-
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
Twenty-one, twenty-two school year, if all goes as planned.
Hold on, there's a side note. It's, it's a little bit of a Rubik's Cube. It, it, the, the intermediate school will be ready, but the new elementary school has to be done before the sixth grade moves. So it'll be when the, at new elementary school is finished, so the fourth grade, uh, I mean, um, so that, uh, it, it, those three grades can fit into that building.
Yes, sir?
Ask a couple of business questions. Could you enlighten me a little longer on how, I don't know what the budget is this year, I'm assuming it's 150, 80 million, is that in the hunt?
You want, this is a budget question, or?
Well, just, well, yeah, I just want to know what it is now, and I'm, I'm having a little trouble thinking that you're going to take it from what it is now and raise it $85 million in five years, not raise my taxes. I mean, I, I've been, both of my kids had good runs here. I appreciate what the school board has done. I appreciate the runs my kids had, but no, I mean, and you're sort of preaching to the choir, because everyone here got kids in the school, it looks like. And I'm working a little longer than I want to work, and frankly, one of the reasons I'm working a little longer than I want to work is because I got to pay my taxes, and my recollection is, the school taxes are the highest in the western part of the state. So I'm having a little trouble figuring out, one, how the enrollment's only going to be 1,200, because my kids were in the system when the high school got built, and when the middle school got expanded, and your consultant there did the projections then, and those buildings were going to be big enough to handle the growth ad infinitum, and now we're back here going, we got to enlarge the school, we got to have better things. And frankly, the, the administration did a good job, because no one wants to do bad things for children, everyone wants to do good things for children. And that was their presentation, and can't argue with that. But when I stop working, I don't want to make a choice between eating my dog's food and paying my taxes. So if you could enlighten me how you're going to frankly double the budget in five years and not raise my taxes, I'm kind of curious, for starters.
Did you catch all that, or do you want me to frame it? So if I, if I, okay.
First answer, your que- your question, our, our current expenditure budget is just over 62 million. All right, the second-
Does it hold for the year?
For, for, yes, for the 1920 school year.
62 million?
62 million.
And you're going to raise it to eight, by 85?
Well, again, the 85 million is the expenditure plan over five years. We won't, we'll wrap that expenditure in over 25 to 30 million.
So they won't raise the budget, that's just what you're going to spend?
Right, we're, that's a expenditure plan phased in over five years, plus each one of those, you know, pieces that we spend as we take on a project will be wrapped in to our current debt service. So we'll be, you know, bringing that in, you know, with our financial advisor as we can afford it. So it'll be phased in, uh, with our current debt service. So we're not going to double our budget just from that debt service-
I'm sorry, I'm-
-in five years.
I, I agree with you.
So, some of that debt will be, you know, oh, sorry.
You said you agreed, you understood?
You understand it?
I'm adhering.
So you, you just understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand, but you understand my situation. I'm already paying more taxes than God bought little green apples.
Yeah, so our goal is, our basic goal is to not increase our debt service expenditure each year, you know, or very minimal, uh, and wrap that in, and so as some of our debt service falls off, as we paid off, then we increase our, our new plan.
You can understand my concern, because I'm like the only old person here, you know?
Absolutely. And then, you had made a comment-
Except for Leonard, of course.
Yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I pay taxes, too.
Yeah, but you're getting some services. You got kids in the school?
We are, we are.
Hmm? You got kids in the school?
Yep.
Okay, that's, you know, I got people asking me, why would I want to live here and pay these taxes with no kids in the school? Because frankly, my experience is, most people who live in the district, as soon as their kids get out of the school, beat feet, and then the houses get filled up with more people who got kids. And no one in their right mind moves here, since you brought it up, without kids to be in the system. I mean, I think that y'all should be happy with me, because I'm paying a gazillion dollars in taxes, and I got no kids in the system. I'm trying to keep me, I'm trying to keep myself in that situation.
Thank you, sir.
And I hope that was in the media, Mr. Tony, that they said you're not going to raise my taxes, but for someone here.
We have any other questions?
Do you have a timeline on the Act 34, since there are a lot of finished questions involved?
A timeline on the Act 34 hearing?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Then that'll be made public, like this meeting was made public?
Yes, that'll be made public, yeah.
That's been public for the year.
Well, there's, uh, one last thing that I want to point you to, that if you have, um, any itching questions that still remain inside your packet, there was a piece of paper that you can write down, uh, any questions that you may have, your name, your address, so that we can answer those questions and get them back to you. You're certainly free to also take those with you, um, and send them back to us, um, and have open lines of communication. And, uh, and with that, I'll have Dr. Laquette have some closing remarks.
And additionally, if you think of questions that, uh, come later after this evening, and you didn't write them down, you know, please feel free to email me, uh, and I will, um, do my best to answer them, or, and certainly get the information you need to answer the questions. Uh, there will be, uh, more communications coming, uh, from the district as we get further down the, the project. Uh, we will, certainly, uh, will be, and legally have to advertise that the Act 34 meetings when those occur, uh, and so you'll be continuing to hear more from us. And, so we do appreciate, uh, everyone coming out this evening. Uh, I know we, uh, had a lot, uh, to cover, um, and, and it's going to, uh, um, help us improve the community in general, and, and certainly the community for our children. So really appreciate you coming. Thank you very much.